Good morning. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Persian County Board of Commissioners. Today is Wednesday, September 15th, I call this meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have approval of minutes, we have minutes for July 8th and July 16th.
I have 21st, August 4th and September 1st. Is that right? So, I have...
The 21st.
Yeah, those two just need to be signed.
Okay.
These need just to be signed.
Okay, okay.
Which you started to do.
Okay, so.
So I didn't have any corrections.
I didn't either.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the July 21st minutes noting that they are 45 days past due. The August 4th and September 1st minutes are done in a timely manner. So I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Public input, public comment and discussion, no action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on that agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Public commentary will generally be limited to three minutes per person. Any public comments? Any public comments on Zoom? Hearing none or seeing none, we'll move on. Review of all agenda items to determine if any do or do not impose a direct and significant economic burden on a business or directly restrict the formation, operation, or expansion of the business.
I did not see them, I didn't need them. So I'll make a motion to that effect, but there is none. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. We have an, almost an 8:35 a presentation from Ralph. So, I mean, we're almost there, but if you could come up, do you have to get set up doing anything?
Mr. Chairman, listeners.
Good morning.
Good morning. As always, thank you for your time, appreciation. On behalf of our management team, we appreciate your continued support and interest in our project. I guess, I don't know, there's a couple of months ago, I was here, he gave me kind of a broad overview of the project. I just want to give you an update on what we're at, and we have a request for you this morning. As we talked about a couple of months ago, we're in our preliminary design phase, we have now completed that. We've updated our CapEx number, our financial model. The board met about two or three weeks ago and approved the new capital number and our financial plan. So now we're preparing to go out to the financial markets to raise a round of financing. So things are going pretty well. In terms of raising our financing round, the biggest risk for us continues to be permitting. You know, that's the area where investors have the most needs about, you know, putting money in when you don't have all the permits. I think on the water side, we're pretty good. Where the question comes is really more on the building side. We talked about before, what we don't want to do is walk Friday noon, put 12,000 drawings on James' desk and say, "What are you doing over the weekend?" We talked about developing this process by which we would not really have a permit, but a process where we would have a series of permits with doing that. So, our CEO and CFO have requested that if we could give a letter from the commission outlining, we're going to do a process for this permitting process, that'd be helpful to, in their financial presentations, to secure that. So, you know, what we'd like to ask today is that, you know, we're working Heidi James to develop a letter for your approval and input, and then we could get that done over the next few weeks, and we'll go out and start financing, so we can have that letter as available to us. We're also getting a couple of other third-party letters with regards to just general what water rights are and things like that. It's a matter of trying to give them some comfort. So, we're confident we're going to be able to raise the money. I do have one other item. We're going to, as we talked about a couple of months ago, a key part of our strategy is be able to take excess water and purge water from the grass and recharge it to the aquifer, it's a key part of our water balance. We propose to do that through rapid infiltration basins or ribs, which are, I think there's about 25 of them in operation at the state of the bad fruit common. When we did the soil work, the porosity of the soil and the soil profiles are within acceptable ranges, but they're not ideal. So, what we've proposed to the state, and the state has agreed, would be a good idea is to actually build a test rib. And so we're in the process of designing that right now, and we're going to probably be doing, building this test for probably late October. So I see this as being an ideal way, because we'll have to come to the county for an excavation permit as a way, with this really small piece of the project, to actually work with James and Mark Hollenstein to get a permit and to get comfortable with what they're looking for, what they're looking for, so it's kind of in my mind, a test run. We'll be back for early site works permits, you know, late this year, early next year. So that's kind of where we're at, we're excited and...
Me too.
Yeah, I think we'll be, you know, positioned, close our financing round, fourth quarter, we'll be in a position to, you know, break ground early next year and be looking to start hiring people, so.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
We get lots of comments, okay, where's it at, where's it at, what's happening?
It's happening, it's just there's a lot of design work now.
Yeah.
So, pretty soon there'll start to be some activity out there in the ground.
Yeah, good job.
So have you been contacted by the Grass Valley people? Because I know they wanted you to come to a meeting and...
Yeah, I think I'm scheduled the last week.
The last Monday of October.
I see, man, it's just my schedule.
No, I know that they've been working with Heidi, so.
Yeah.
Because they're excited about the project as well.
I think we're speaking, and I think right after that, there's the, what do they use to call it, Windhawk Futures, whatever it's now. The 90, no, 9580 Regional Development Authority, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, the US 9580 Futures will be that Thursday. So we've got a draft on Monday at Grass Valley, the futures on Thursday, and then we're trying to ship them out for something else later that afternoon.
You're a busy person, that's for sure.
So for a, a letter of support, you're going to draft a letter, you're...
Yeah, we'll draft it, work with James and Heidi to draft it, send it to you for your approval.
And then get it, get it to us.
Exactly.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion that we provide a letter of support for this project and that we authorize the chair to sign it. You'll be working with the Building Department and Economic Development on drafting of the letter.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Good job, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Road Department, Dan is not here, he's out in Grass Valley. He has a report and says, "We have finished practicing blowouts." Who's on there?
That was you.
Oh. I said, wait. Anyway, they're fixing roads, Grass Valley Road, Gold Banks, the Tesco Ranch. We will have to come back and address some of that, our development when time permits. We cleaned up Grass Valley Transfer Site twice since our last meeting. The Grass Valley Fire Department is going to burn the pile this week, weather permitting. We cleaned a cattle garde at Amos and ended with, and I just jumped off, replacing a cattle garde at Rose Creek Court with a used one that they had on hand. We finished most of the hand patching on Limerick, but we'll need a couple more days up there for, to be completely done. Moved to Grass Valley Road to do some hot mitts patching while it's still warm, and that's where they're at yesterday and today. We have several complaints of bad roads in Grass Valley area. Most are roads we don't maintain, but we plan to fix them good enough so emergency vehicles can access them. I don't have much for landfill, except to say that Steve and Ken are doing a great job and the place looks good. Mitch sent the numbers for our semi-annual waste reporting, so I completed that report. We found time to blade the road into the landfill on Monday. That is Dan's report. Buildings and ground. Oh, I have a salary resolution for Robert Parish.
I'll make a motion to approve this salary resolution for Robert Parish. And I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. And he's a good hand, he does a good job. Now we can go on to buildings and grounds.
Not a whole lot different report than what we've been doing, just doing a lot of weeds. That's really what we've been doing. It's been a lot of that, I did some work over at the senior center. Been working on the cemetery, somebody keeps playing with the water spigots at both cemeteries. We're turning them off, they're turning them on.
Leaving them on, that kind of thing?
They've been, we have a splitter, they have been turning on a hose part, leaving that on, that's been done a couple of different times. Somebody's unstrung the end caps of the trip lines. Don't know who's doing it. And there's not a way I could put a camera there to find out.
No.
Let me bring it to all's attention.
The cemeteries are looking really good, thank you very much. Did we find the door for that you need to put back up?
I have one ordered.
You have one ordered?
Okay.
Is that for the community center?
The fire marshals.
Just about $1,600. Fire-rated door.
Oh, okay.
They aren't that inexpensive. And we're going to change the frame on how it opens and closes, so it doesn't interfere with hitting anything inside. It's going to swing. And it'll have a path, you can't be locked. That'd be, hopefully they'll be able to get it out of those next companies. But it is on order.
And on the fire inspection, are there any other things that you need to...
I can't really read his report, but he did mention something about some signs, but I don't have a number, get ahold of him.
Who was it? Was it Hydeman? Okay, I have a number for him, I will text it to you.
Are they exit signs?
I'm not exactly sure, they just mentioned something about signs. So I will, I'd ask for clarification, but we seem to keep missing each other. Other than that, life is good, we're doing great.
So upgrade camera license?
Yes, so with, with the, adding the extra memory that we added to the cameras, unbeknownst to myself or our camera company, we have to upgrade the licensing to extend our memory as much as we are. By doing that, that also allows another feature that was brought up during a safety meeting, where certain departments would like to be able to see outside of their office doors for security purposes. So like an example would be Justice Court. If they wanted to see outside Justice Court, if there was an incident or something went on, they would have access to look at just those cameras and their entrances, or if the judge is at her by herself doing a bookie warrant, she could see the doors, so she wouldn't have to dig the doors unlocked to allow somebody in. That's the purpose of it.
Is there, and it says $6,000, is there money in your budget for doing that? That's, that's the main answer.
Is that out of capital projects, or is that...
It's out of my camera money.
Your money, okay.
The security. We have, there's a line item for cameras and security.
I'll make the motion to approve. I'll second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Talked about the installation of the doors, open, closing assist. So admin, the front, the double door, and then the...
The DMV.
The DMV door.
So, I guess, well, these things that we've kind of been lagging behind with, but we need to add an ADA-powered assist door as we did down there at the old courthouse. I guess there's been several complaints here recently, but people have a hard time getting into both of those doors. It's a safety thing.
So, I asked Cheryl if she would contact Marshall from Pool Pack, because they have grants for under $10,000 to see if that could be paid. So she will contact him today and let us know. But in the meantime, if there is no money available through that, where were you thinking?
I'm not sure, I just know that we can get in a lot of trouble if something happens to me.
So Rain, if we can do it through Pool Pack, that would be great, but if we can't, is there a place where...
Well, I looked at the capital improvement budget and, you know, we have $40,000 on a line item for emergencies. We might have to reprioritize some of the other projects, because again, that building's done, and the sun balance is really dwindling. Again, there's no revenue coming into it, other than the marijuana money, and that's specifically supposed to be for law enforcement.
Right.
Yeah.
And part of the ending unbalance right now is from that.
Well...
We better wait and see what Pool Pack says.
Well, I think we need to go ahead. We do have that $40,000, and it's something that is AD, to make us ADA compliant.
Another thing, Cheryl, that I found out about Pool Pack, there's only X amount allowed per county. And remember that our sheriff, our fire departments, they've already been branched it some of those Pool Pack grants in last fiscal year. So I don't know if it's, you know, calendar year, fiscal year, or what, but we have to bring in that, that might not be cool.
Yeah, and I don't know, and that's why. But I don't know, what, what do you want to do, do you want to go forward, or...
I think you should wait till you have some contact with Pool Pack.
Know if we can, okay, so we could put it on the next agenda. Unless we get an answer before our meeting's over today.
Have you ever priced a pump for the airport, you know, to replace that, that pump?
No.
Can we do that, just to see what it's going to cost, it could cost?
Sure.
You go that, like to those people that do the maintenance probably, don't you?
Hmm.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I guess they wanted to speak there.
You what?
I guess the quilters had something to say about the community center internet. It was coming their way.
So, so you're done with your part. Senior Center, we have a salary resolution for Kelly Brown.
Well, I'd like to come back to that, because I'd like to discuss that a little bit, if you're going to jump to community center.
Why? My God. We can move on to community center, where it says advertise and hire a community center coordinator position?
Is the ad already in, or it's... So I'll make a motion that we officially approve advertising and hiring the community center on position.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now you had something else on the community center that isn't on the agenda?
These ladies.
Yes. We have a meeting coming up next week. And NN, I asked, I need to know, because we show coordinator, I need to know who. I need to contact that NNRS to come into the unique internet for us on Thursday, the 23rd, and be able to pick up their equipment on the 27th.
Do we not already have internet there?
There is, but they, they, they have their own...
They bump it up or something. But isn't Giselda still helping us out, part-time? That was the agreement, that she would do that until, until we found somebody.
She is.
So she's still there and available.
If she's not available, I'll, I'll, I'll just make sure one of them will hold me for a while.
Okay, because we, because Mitchell asked me, you've got to hold somebody, so he...
Well, yeah, they have my number as well. Just get ahold of me a day before, just so I don't forget, and I like to have that, that available.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but there is a number where you can call the community center itself, and it may go to a recording, but then Giselle will call you back.
Yeah, well, I didn't know whether she was still there or not.
She's doing double duty.
Okay. And then my other question is, we have reserved dates through 2023. My people are flying in from Texas, Pennsylvania, California, Oregon. I've given them dates, this September. When I went to check on our dates for 2022, something was booked on the weekend that we hadn't, because she had like booked. What happened to my reservation for 2022 through 2023? Shayla, could you keep talking to the mic, we can't hear you.
I'm not sure how far the calendar went out.
We went through 2022, 23, we got it. We booked it and we saw it marked in the books, where are the books?
And how long ago did you do this?
Giselle has the books.
Yeah, it is the first of January, yeah, 2023, and we did it last fall for 2022.
Giselle has the books, Giselle has the calendar.
She has her calendar set in for when I checked to make sure of the dates, and she put somebody in the date that we need to be there.
So, so what were the dates for 2022 and 2023? And then we will check on it, because obviously there's more than one book somewhere.
We've managed to get 2023 straightened out with her.
Okay.
2022, September, because why not questioning? And that is September 22nd through the 25th.
And that one, you had to change the date?
That one, she has somebody booked during that time, where we cannot have that big change. We have 30 people coming, and they have to set up their vacations and their routine. And their plan fare.
Yeah. So we'll have to, obviously there is more than one book, if she didn't have it, and we'll have to find what it is and check into all that. And we'll also have to...
Next Wednesday, because our event starts, they start coming in Thursday and Friday, so we can let them have to change the date, we can let them know at least that you're ahead of time. If we have to, we're hoping not, but could somebody get back to it by next Wednesday?
So can you do that, Shayla?
Yes, I will.
Shayla will need your phone number, though.
The dates in 2023 were what?
The dates for 2022 was September 22nd through 25th. We managed to get the 2023, we managed to get the...
Those are okay.
Those are all okay. The only one we'll have any problem with...
Is next year.
It's September next year. February was okay, but September was not.
What's your phone number? Thank you.
And also, we were told we could only get one key. I need two keys, because we need to log back at night, and we haven't really put some in one.
Okay, so Shayla's over that area, so she'll get back with you.
Okay, and I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you, John, all of them for having the carpet shampooed. We much appreciate it, and so will the lady, because they won't be sniveling and dripping on...
Yeah, we don't want them doing that.
No, well, sniveling and dripping is not fun when you're trying to scrap load.
Okay, we'll go back to senior center, where we have a salary resolution for Kelly Brown.
So can we get an update on the senior center, what's happening there?
What's happening there? We have a tentative opening date of October 4th. And it really should do, the menu is already done for the month of October. As you know, we hired a director to start it Monday. Today, the director is in, actually starting right now, in the supervisory training Zoom meetings, and there's several of those that she will be attending.
So we have two cooks now that are hired, correct?
We have, we have hired two cooks.
Are they both, they're both working?
They are both working.
And so do we still need volunteers in there working?
We will be calling for volunteers.
No, as a cook.
Excuse me.
I understand that your spouse is in there cooking.
If, if she wasn't in there cooking, they wouldn't be putting out meals.
We have two cooks working, why is she...
Because they're beginning cooks, they can't put out a meal.
If they're beginning cooks, then we shouldn't be doing a salary resolution.
What? She just goes higher.
There, you just told me...
Kelly Brown was just hired, she started last week. This is a salary resolution to set her pay.
And it sets her pay higher than the other cook that is working?
Because she has five years of experience working at this senior center.
How long ago?
Oh my.
And then my question is if she has...
Why do you have to be so difficult? You always are.
Yes, I always am, because I don't agree with some of the things that are happening.
You know, I have to brain from saying this, but the senior center doesn't need your help.
No, it doesn't.
The senior center doesn't want your help.
And I don't want it.
The senior center doesn't want your micromanaging.
And it doesn't need your micromanaging.
If, if I weren't there doing computer input for grants and stuff, it wouldn't be done.
There comes a time when you need to step back.
And there will be, because they're up to speed.
Okay, all right, anyway.
So we have a salary resolution for Kelly Brown, the newest hire cook.
And it brings her in at a step. A step seven, was it?
It does.
And the other cook was hired at a step three?
Yep.
And so.
She didn't have the experience that Kelly Brown does.
I think that it's, I think it's gonna cause a problem with your workers.
It has not.
I have a question.
Yes.
When are you gonna open for meals again?
Just like.
When are you gonna open again for?
That's what I just said, the October fourth is the tentative date. And they also have on their plan, we'll be doing, going back to doing the Friday breakfast at the end of the month. And then something else that wasn't done a lot was, uh, on that breakfast day, the home bound, of course, will be, will be delivered that breakfast.
And Kelly has how many years' experience?
Five years at the senior center.
Was she a cook?
She was a cook.
So she knows all the dietary guidelines she has to meet and all that other stuff.
Yes. And she's, I mean, just like anything, she, she's coming up to speed. And she'll do a great job. Can I get a motion, please?
Actual difference between the step three and the step seven?
Here's a step three, ten dollars an hour, a seven is eleven oh four.
It isn't very much.
I'll make the motion to approve. Kelly Brown. Give it a step seven.
I'm not gonna say.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. So, first thing, you know, fire an ambulance, nobody is here. Anybody on? Sean, are you on?
Good morning, sir. Sean Burke here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. Good morning, everyone. Uh, so for Grass Valley Fire Department, uh, just report that, uh, um, as, uh, as Dan Hill had indicated, we are gonna try and burn the trash pile out there at the transfer site in Grass Valley this Thursday evening, uh, weather permitting, um, so, but it's been pretty permissive the last couple of evenings, so hopefully that will, uh, hold. Uh, we are, um, we just added up our call volume last night, and, uh, we are, we're pretty far ahead of where we normally are. I think we're up to sixty-five calls already uh, for the year, which is, uh, pretty far ahead of our normal schedule. Um, a lot of those are COVID-related, and, uh, not to, not to steal anybody else's thunder, but, uh, we are seeing a significant resurgence of, uh, COVID cases in Humboldt County, uh, and, uh, also in Grass Valley as well, and, and I know, I know for sure we had one death of a resident out there, so. Uh, that's all, that's all a thing we still have to deal with. And, uh, would you like me to go on and, uh, talk about the Lepsi stuff at this point as well?
By all means, go for it.
Okay, so, uh, finally getting some movement on all of our state grants as they, uh, look, uh, to, uh, focus down and close out their, their books, I think. Uh, but the, uh, ENPG grant, uh, is on track to be paid. Um, the ENPG supplemental, that's the, uh, that's the grant we had that funded the reefer truck and the electrical upgrades at the sheriff's office. I think those are both on track to be paid if they haven't already been paid. Uh, and Ree could probably confirm whether she's received any money on that or not. Also, uh, got some movement on the, uh, COVID vaccination grant. Um, we wanted to reprogram some money um, to, uh, to give some additional resources for the, uh, county health nurse, so, uh, got permission to do that. I just need to submit the paperwork, which will be happening hopefully in the next couple of days. And, uh, uh, Lepsi's on track. I think all our reports and stuff are, are submitted. Um, the only thing we have to do before the end of the year is either conduct a hazmat exercise or, um, do a after-action report, uh, and gather up information on an actual hazmat event. And Love Lock Fire Department did respond to a significant hazmat event earlier in the year, say, a fuel spill out at the Rite Patch truck stop. So, um, um, the fire department there in Love Lock is deciding how they wanna proceed with that, but that will give us all of the requirements we need in order to, uh, continue applications for grants into the future. And that's all I have for Lepsi.
Got any questions? Sounds good, Sean. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bye-bye.
Nobody else on Zoom or part department? Safety department. We had an email from Cheryl Haush, she couldn't be here today.
Do you want me to read it? Would you like me to read it?
I said yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, she has state auditors there for the health clinic, so that's why she's not here today. So for the health department, we are continuing to give first and second doses of the COVID vaccine. There has not been much interest in the possible third or booster shot, it's so far. State has yet to give us a date to start the third dose for those of the general population. When and if that happens, Moderna and Pfizer will be offered to those who had their second dose eight months ago. Our yearly flu pod will be the thirtieth of September at the community center between the hours of three and seven, and it will be a drive-through. Um, safety department, we have started the building assessments through pool pact in July. Unfortunately, they had in-house issues, so we were not able to continue. However, they are working with SCATS and starting in November thirtieth, their inspectors will be coming here to start assessments again. Um, she spoke with Rodney about fire inspections, and he will forward her the finished report so that she has them on record. The cemetery, she continues to enter information into the new software system. It's tedious, but well worth the work. Both Big Meadow Cemetery and Low Mountain are looking great. Between our buildings and grounds crew and the juvenile work crew, weeds and trash along the fence lines are clear, and all the weeds surrounding graves have been pulled and discarded. She will be visiting Unionville Cemetery sometime this weekend, and, okay, that's it. That's her report.
IT department. And I would add, by a fine job you do.
So, uh, it's been an extremely busy couple of weeks. Uh, we have, uh, I've been working with, uh, Elizabeth Bonheim uh, on a security audit from, uh, the feds. It's a data security. In fact, I have another meeting with them this afternoon after this one. Um, we are working hard on, um, all the network upgrades, uh, that, that takes a lot of my time. Forward on some equipment refreshes. And then the, the, uh, we're about ready for department heads. For department heads to review the pro- the programming for, um, extensions and call routing for, uh, their offices. I think that's everything. Does, it's quick to say, but it's a lot of work.
And like I say, you do a terrific job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
Have you heard Shannon Bryant?
Shannon Bryant.
About the, uh, eat warrants?
Not since our, our, our first teleconference.
I'm gonna get a hold of it.
Okay.
Try to speed it along.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Justin. Thank you. Economic development. Heidi was here, she isn't now. Is she on? Is not. Electoral departments, Lacy Donaldson, Cook, Treasure.
So, uh, I have some tactical adjustments. Yes, those.
You want, you wanna read it? Do you want it?
Sure. Okay, you wanna read it?
There's, there's actually quite a few. There's, there's, uh, the nature of, of the errors. It's an assessed value change is what it is. Assessed value as well as taxes. I mean, you can look at it if you'd like.
So some of them are increases, and there's a few decreases, so I'll make a motion that we approve.
I will second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. We have approval of corrections. We did that. Approval of higher room rate for Ree Childs, Lacy Donaldson, and, and Barry Maderos to attend a CFOA in Virginia City, and the room rate is a hundred and ten dollars.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the higher room rate, um, for Lacy Donaldson and Barry M- Maderos. I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye, motion passed. Approval of credit card for Katrina Martin, uh, Eleventh Judicial District Court Administrator in amount of twenty-five hundred dollars, and Giselda Canelli, senior center director, in a amount of two thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye, motion passed. Ree, you're up. So that's a fun time, right? Thank you. Lori Basso, Serenia, is she on?
I just texted her, so she should be.
She's coming over, okay. Bryce Shields.
I don't have any, anything by way of update.
We don't have the code enforcer on there, but I will say that the building on Upper Valley Road, the burned building is being worked on. And I think it's the same people that were working on that, uh, motel. It, it looks like the same vehicle. Judge Stevens. New Jerry Allen. I don't see Jerry. Uh, we have a salary resolution. And a request.
Make the motion to approve the salary resolution for, as Maralda will.
And I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion passed. Request to advertise higher for a vacancy due to an employee retirement.
Is that a deputy position?
And that is a deputy that retired.
Okay, okay. I'll make the motion to approve, and I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Motion passed. Eleventh Judicial District Court requests a removal of inventory, uh, five to seventh tier rotary file, uh, file cabinets, and one Kodak camera.
So I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Motion in a second. Grass Valley, we heard Derby Field Airport, uh, approval of higher room rate for Commissioner Rackley to attend in the Aviation Association Conference in Tonopah.
Do you know what that room rate?
Yeah, I believe it's one nineteen.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Motion passed.
You'll be there and the, the NACO conference at the same time?
Yes. It's gonna be a busy week. So we have, uh, Far West is out there. I, I was out there with them, myself and Rusty Keel. I guess. I guess it was Friday. Uh, anyway, they're, they're, they're starting their, uh, design for water project, uh, and we'll know more after that goes. The, uh, gate opener, I spent Saturday with, uh, gate people, uh, fence people, and they installed a new process or a new way of, of, for the gate to open and close, and we've not had any issues since.
Out of curiosity, how much will the water project cost at the airport?
Well, if you knew pipe cost, it'd be different. The, uh, the engineering design part, we had a proposal, which you saw, was thirty-seven thousand five hundred. The project itself, uh, we'll see when the engineer is, is done, but it was in the four hundred thousand dollar range. I have a feeling it's gonna be a bit higher because of the pipe cost. Board appointments resignation. Any? Board appointments?
We have one for, a request from Wendy Nelson to be appointed to the recreation board as the business person. So I'll go ahead and make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye, motion passed. None further?
Lori's here.
Oh, there you are. Come on up. I didn't see you sneaking.
Okay, and then I have a quick line. Sorry, Sarah. I was focused on a project and I didn't hear my ding ding go off from my morning.
Do we wanna start with the role adjustments?
We've approved them, but if you wanna explain a little bit.
So, um, I, I always have to ask Lacy or Sarah today which one she handed in. Did she hand in the PCWCD water ones? Okay, you just coach me, Sarah, because I try and do a few a week, and once I hand them off to Lacy, I don't necessarily think about them again, she did ask me to be here. Okay. I just read at the bottom. Oh, Mr. Knight, that manufactured home was removed. Oh, Mr. Knight, that manufactured home was removed. I'm, so let me just back up. On my vacant personal property desk, which is now becoming Jennifer Hill's desk, I found some items from two thousand eighteen forward. So I have spent the last about five months cleaning up those. So many of these things should have been taken care of prior. So that's why they're delayed. So Mr. Avren Knight sent in documentation quite a while ago that that manufactured home was removed. The Kendricks family, that manufactured home, Mrs. Kendricks actually drove in from her firmly parcels or estate to share that that was destroyed by fire. And I, and I had to adjust a few years on that because, again, of finding what I've been finding. Mr. Bivins is one of our veterans that was very mad about his dollar forty-eight, so I corrected that. And Mr. Crowfoot's parcel was created in DevNet, but it was kind of blown off the software data for a couple of different reasons. If you do not put in a prior year gross assessed value, it generates a zero bill, zero bill, zero bill, which was on our side. Plus something in the software possibly glitched and just deleted the parcel. So he wanted a bill and he wanted it for those two years. It helps with that. Mrs. Ramona Wells, that was a code enforcer project, and I haven't heard from Fran. Maybe she's out. Anyway, in the manufactured home world, in order to get a moving permit, you have to have your taxes paid in full. They were paid for the prior tax year, which was prior to July one. This is a reflection of this year's tax bill. And I believe Mr. Daniel Myers may have paid those or someone did. This is an elderly lady. It needed to be removed. I'm asking that this seventeen dollars and forty-three cents be forgiven. If not, I, I'm serious, I'll pay it. There's no reason for me to burden the elderly lady again. She did everything she could. So those are those. The rest is PCWCD. Some farmers are going to be upset. So when you work in DevNet, you have to do imports and the database is written in a particular way. And, and I email out this spreadsheet to our vendors that have either groundwater or, or valley water. If they're not combined into one assessment, so a farmer can have four or five different water assessments on one parcel, so maybe Bingo and Karen might have on their primary parcel. Maybe they just want all their water billed there. These corrections, in, in an oversight of mine and Peggy Holland, we had a nice talk. They were not combined. So when DevNet imported, it only picked up one of, how many ever? There could have been three to five assessments. So these particular farmers, thanks to Walter Brinkerhoff bringing it to our attention, they were short this amount. So it's a correction to indicate that the system did not add them together. It only chose the last one that was dated in. So they're just little glitches like that. These are kind of big money glitches, so. So does that answer everything? I mostly just wanted to make sure that Mrs. Wells could be forgiven. If not, I would help kick in and help her out because she did everything she literally could. Okay, thank you, Sarah, for having us.
Thank you for catching all this.
Yeah, it was just Walter brought it to our attention, so. I'll see what the farmers have to say. I've made Peggy aware and given her tax bills of the what this is going to look like and stuff like that. I'm sure some of them will be upset, but. Okay, thank you. So once they go to Lacy, I don't know how fast they go out, but you know, she and I try and communicate when they're going to be on the roll. And then I had a couple of agenda items. The Far West contract was just a little delayed. Lucas was late and then I, no, did I, did I give you guys the Far West? I'm hoping I did.
Yeah, I did.
Okay. Lucas was a little late and then I was a little late, so I'll own that responsibility. He apologized for being after the fiscal year and then I got busy and I was a little later than the fiscal year. And that's just the traditional contract for every year. I put both accounts down to represent accountants' contribution and then I continued to pay for what is the assessor's responsibility.
And you reviewed that?
So I'll make a motion that we approve the Far West contract for engineering for fiscal year FY twenty-two, the GIS services. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. I confused myself because I brought two of the other contracts.
And then we have one for professional services with Mark Stafford, real estate appraiser for the appraisal projects such as geothermal solar and the data center.
Right, and, and it's not a good time, I realize, for me to bring something like this forward. Back when Jenna was here in October of two thousand twenty, Story County Assessor presented. And so the projects that are landing in our county, they're wonderful. But we do not have the, for your, I don't know if you were here then or not, Shayla, I've lost track of my years. I do not have the expertise to do infrastructure such as solar, geothermal, potential projects of Mr. Barrett's. I won't name that because he's very confidential, but you all are aware of that. And I don't know if it was discussed in the budgets. I've asked a couple of times in my write, written updates if you all have put any money aside or consideration for these projects. For example, S. Solar Head, how I find out about projects is building permits and/or agendas. And I try and watch them very closely. And James is going to graciously add me to the planning departments. So an eight hundred thousand dollar grading permit was pulled for S. Solar. The project was approved on an ag parcel. Anytime you move earth, even by shovel or equipment, it converts an ag parcel to higher use. So my job as the assessor, if that permit is pulled before a lien date, which is July one of every year, is to convert the use and to a higher use than, than lien them. So I did that and the current egg owners not real happy, but understood the consequence of the statutes and what happens forward. In my case, I asked them for a plat map. Is it going to be the entire three hundred twenty-seven acres or just a particular amount? When I don't receive that information, I, you know, have to move forward with what I can. The Star Peak project out on I-80 has been leaned to the tune of about five hundred and twenty thousand dollars by contractors. They are not apparently paying their bills. I've reached out to them more than once to please communicate with me as a new assessor to this type of infrastructure, how we can work together as stakeholders in our county. There's no response.
I'm sorry, which project was that?
The geothermal.
Okay, I, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
No, okay, there's, there's an old special use permit on file. I have to, you know, my job is to discover list and value. I usually discover through permitting or communication, so my job is to be aware of agendas. And I'm not having any luck with the geothermal stakeholders communicating. I have a contractor that I have become a quite, professional acquaintances with who has shared with me that there's several million dollars worth of taxable items out there. And so I need the help of an expert to get this on the tax roll. We're losing money if, if we don't. And I don't know how US leaders want to proceed, but if we continue to, which is awesome, have these sort of newer projects, we're going to need experts' help. Humboldt County just hired Mark to do their solar project, but the geothermal project is a huge concern of mine. Nobody will communicate with me. And I don't know, sharing those contacts with you.
They're doing a lot of work out there.
They're doing a lot of work and they're not paying their bills.
Yeah.
And that's why they're being leaned. They have two huge liens that have been recorded. And when I reach out to them, they're very friendly. And when, when they want a map done, they're equally as friendly, but when I ask them to come communicate with me, they're, they're MIA. So.
Interesting.
I don't know how to proceed.
So Reen, how would we pay for this? Would it come out of Advalorum or the general government or?
I would suggest the general government in the general, that's kind of, that's all for things that aren't related to a specific.
Yeah, and it's, it's something we definitely need and it will generate, it will more than pay for itself.
Just the transmitters alone, this contractor is a very knowledgeable husband and wife team out of Battle Mountain, and they've been very gracious in sharing information with me. And they also had to lien the project. There's several million dollars in transmitters alone sitting out there. And they've moved a lot of stuff off already, so they've kind of been just not willing to communicate with me. And, you know, I can't be forceful. I'm not a building inspector. Not that I'm saying James should be, but I can't go red tag them or apply any amount of, you need to come in and be accountable to them. I, you know, I discover, I list and I value, and they're not working with me.
So, did you review that agreement?
I did, yeah. And, and it looks fine.
Okay.
And as far as I'm not communicating with you, the project manager had been working with Dan Hill and I.
Okay.
When they first started, so I have his contact information. I also have the contact information of the law firm that represents
Okay.
that project. So if you want to send me the email specifically on what you need them to do.
Okay.
I'd be happy to, to reach out to their attorneys and also to their manager.
And I can share with you who I've spoke to. I have a list, Bryce, so it's not all coming to me, but I believe I spoke to the project. Is it Brad? I've spoke to him and he was supposed to come by and share. And so right now, all I've done is sent them a business declaration. That's sort of my paper trail, like, please, you know, work with me here. Let's get this stuff on the tax roll however we can. If we have to bill a dispersonal property the first year, that's fine. And, and what will happen is depending on when the, when the energy is mined and where it's maybe going to go, whether it stays within our county line or crosses, it could become a centrally assessed project and then Mark would step back and we would not need him. But until that happens, the Department of Taxation cannot help me either. I mean, I've been trying for six or seven months to see what avenue I could go and I'm, I'm hitting the brick wall.
Are they still building this even though they're lean?
Well, they've done a ton of, the people that I know are excavators, so they have a, you know, dirt work company. They leaned them for close to, I think, three hundred and thirty thousand and the prior lien, I think, was around two nineteen. And so they have, they have done extensive work. If you drive down I-80, you will see.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's pretty incredible. I don't know how geothermal works. I know it's considered mining and the water comes, it's cooked and then the energy is transferred. If it's transferred, you know, out of our county, it will become a centrally assessed project and they have special appraisers that will work on that. But right now, it's our county's responsibility or mine to make you all aware. Plus, we have the Aqua Farm coming. You know, these are great projects, but I'll be needing some guidance.
Sure. So I'll go ahead and approve the, or make a motion to approve the contract with Mark Stafford for his services as a real estate appraiser to assist with the upcoming projects and some of the ones in current existence. And it will be paid from the general government account.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Thank you all. And it may not cost that much. Like Mark said, if we can get some information and.
No, and thank you for being proactive on this because we do need this. We are not experts in many areas.
And I, and I'm excited to see these come. I just do not, what we learn as appraisers for you all, we do not have this expertise to appraise this sort of stuff. Then I have to give a kudos to Bryce. Another rural assessor approached me yesterday at the conference and said, thank you so much for removing the twenty hours on the DMV contract. She lost her one, she has two employees and she lost one and she had to close DMV down for a week. And she said, please thank you.
She lost one because of contract?
No, she just lost one because of some personal, family health issues. But she said, had Bryce not helped me with that, she would be in violation of her DMV contract. So she wanted Bryce to know that she appreciates that being removed. So thank you. All right, thank you all and I'll get with you, Bryce, on the gentleman that you're working with, see what we can do.
Do you have the original for the contract with Mark?
He just sent me an email.
Okay.
That I told you. Would you like something different?
No.
Okay.
I'll get it and I'll have very sorry.
He would have been here, but he's teaching a class to the assessors and appraisers today and now.
Was that in a Word or a PDF word?
Yes.
Okay, because I need, I need to change the context up, so.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Either email or my bill, but he'll be busy all day today teaching that class.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Lori.
So we have five minutes, six minutes before nine forty timed event. We can go on number fourteen, which is update from. Anyway, any, any update on ARP? Yeah, the ARP funding or, or projects, any update?
Not really on that. There isn't much new. But there is something about the COVID and we do have a, there is a mandate now from the governor. And it indicates that if you have over a hundred employees, there are certain requirements. We have eighty-two. So we do not fall under that. And I don't remember all the requirements. Karen, you've got it there. So what the, the mandate is that all employers with a hundred or more employees, that we have to ensure that our workforce is fully vaccinated or require any workers who remain unvaccinated to produce a negative test result on at least a weekly basis. So we are not required to do that. So none of this applies, which is good because I would have an issue with it anyway.
Litigation meeting? No litigation meeting? Report from legal counsel.
I talked to Seven Trops Distillery. They're gonna be out this week to sign the lease agreement and that they're gonna start moving in. They'd like a letter of support from the county. And I'll contact Heidi and I'll work with her for that letter of support so they can provide it to their. I, I guess it would be beneficial for financing and investment purposes. And then the Engine Rocket Company that's based in California would like to renew the lease.
They would.
At the, at Derbyfield.
Good.
So I'll get that in the works and we'll get it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Good.
That's pretty much all I have.
Actually, I've seen some traffic going out there. They're out looking or doing.
Yeah, yeah. So I'll schedule that. I'll get that on the next agenda. And that's all I have.
From administrative assistant.
I have this requirement to receive our notices proceeding for the senior center base system. I will be working with John to get the specs to send out two letters. It's under a hundred thousand dollars, so all we have to do is send out two letters only once I get that.
Still got a couple of minutes, items from future agendas?
I don't have anything. I don't have anything yet.
Any correspondence?
We have one letter from the couple in Grass Valley. Would you like me to send that to Dale so that he can review it regarding those?
He already, and I've given him the, or I forwarded the first letter off. And actually, they are after they're done with, doing what they're to Mason Road to work on now. Two minutes? Do you have anything else you, come on up. You can at least get ready before we start. We still have a couple of minutes.
So we did approve you for the record.
Okay, yeah, that's done. Now you can go rec re. Yeah. So unfortunately, we still have to wait a couple.
It's okay.
So I know you're on the museum board too. You have lots of good stuff going on there.
Yeah, that's a great board.
We just had a meeting yesterday.
Yeah.
They're doing a lot of stuff.
Right.
Right.
And it's good stuff.
Yeah, it's very efficient.
Could we get the Kodak camera that was taken off the inventory of the district court and put it in the museum?
Oh, put it in the museum?
I haven't seen a Kodak camera.
I know.
That's funny.
Isn't that, Rain, the three thousand dollars, isn't that the amount? For, for an inventory, we have to put it in?
Yeah.
That's.
Three thousand or higher.
Okay. And
Probably when this was put in was back when it was, the limit was a thousand dollars.
Yeah.
We just recently changed that, like, maybe three years ago.
Yeah. We have one item coming up at the muse- or at the museum. At the senior center, we don't have it yet, but it, it's like thirty-three hundred dollars. So we'll have to do a, an inventory sheet on it. And it's retiring another one. But I'm sure that, well, I'll, I'll ask whether that was in inventory. I doubt if it was. I'll find out. Okay, I have nine forty. So we have Frontier Community Coalition. Placement of two says full time or combination thereof positions within the county through the Health Healthy Community Coalition to provide direct client services from May of from services through May of twenty twenty-three at no cost to Persian County.
Yes, we're really excited. So I was notified at a director's meeting last, maybe last Monday, that they had positions that we could basically snatch up. And there are forty-six positions. It's through the C B C Health Despairities Grant. So we have twelve coalitions in the state of Nevada. Our coalition covers four counties now. I'm also covering Mineral County. And so I decided to take four actually full-time positions. I can break those into part-time positions. I've talked with District Attorney Bryce Shields and I'm going to give him one of the positions to work with the elderly with guardianship. Is that correct? So that'll be a great position.
If the board will.
If the board will prove, yeah. So and we, we need to work on a scope of work. Then we need to discuss the, the well, the, the food bank is going to take two part-time positions. Okay. We already know who those two people are going to be. I've been talking with Penny Higbee. And so these people have been working for free, basically. What they'll be making is around eighteen dollars and seventy-nine cents an hour. And so that'll help lift people. It looks like we'll be able to do a continuation. It's not guaranteed, but even further than.
And those two positions are full-time or part-time?
Those are two part-time positions. They don't have enough to keep them busy really to do all time. So but, you know, Penny can have them driving more. We were talking about possibly, you know, with the county, maybe they could even help with
Yeah.
busing the seniors over to the food bank and then bussing them over, you know, however we work that out. So I have, basically, that's one position if you guys allow that. And then one full position. So I have two full positions, which could be broken into four positions, basically. It's just depending. And if, you know, so with the senior center, we were thinking either to part-time or to full-time. I don't know. It's, it would save the county money. We can do it one of two ways. I have a payroll company in Las Vegas I work with, and I also have an accountant, Drake Rose Associates, to help smooth all my accounting. And we can do ten ninety-nine or we can do it where we have them, you know, just our employees and we can move for a payroll. I'm discussing with our accountants right now how that looks. We haven't had to have single audits because we have technically been over seven fifty, been real close to seven hundred fifty thousand. But so that's where we're at. But anyhow, it would be a contract position. So it's guaranteed through May thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. We, it's just, you know, we need to work out some details and if you guys would want to approve that. Otherwise, I could go into other counties with some of these positions and I can use one for Mineral County as well. So.
So we have two part-times for one full-time.
So I, yeah, so I have four positions and you can break them up into part-times. So I could have eight positions of part-times or, you know, and you can do whatever you want. So twenty or forty hours.
No, you had a position of sometimes in the district attorney's office as well?
For a public guardian or a public guardian.
And that's like a half-time person there?
It could, it could be half-time. It could be full-time, just depending on what the other needs are. I don't want to hog the position by any means.
Yeah, no hogging.
I don't want to be that guy. But, yeah, if we could get at least a part-time position, a twenty-hour a week position to go out and visit wards, wards who live in the community and wards who live outside of the community, just so that they have a contact with somebody and that they know exactly what they need, that would be really helpful to free up my time and free up staff time.
At the senior center, we have actually, we can use a half-time person. Now, what do we do? Two half-times? We used to have AmeriCorps come in and they had an employee here that, and we paid for part, they paid for part, that worked with our seniors to help them draw their paperwork, give various things that the seniors needed. I talked with two individuals that are volunteering their time now. One is a former AmeriCorps employee where she does that stuff. And the other one is one that's working part-time now at the senior center doing she's rearranged the books. She's rearranged the filing cabinets. Anyway, she's there doing a lot of stuff like that. And she's in tune with the seniors. So if it means having one part-timer, then that AmeriCorps person could do that. If it means having two part-time positions, then one for each one of those people to help the seniors.
Yeah, and we definitely have enough positions where he could have full-time, you could have two part-time. And I have still an extra position I have. It's allotted yet, which could be even more if we need. I just figured with the county and, you know, you wouldn't have, you wouldn't give it to a hundred employees either. It'd be housed under us. So that's what I'm thinking. It's just, it's a savings and they're really pushing it into the rural areas so that we can kind of fill the gaps. It's really service oriented. It's not janitorial work. It's not it's not admin work. There is some admin pieces, obviously, that can go with it, but it's not, we're not just trying to hire people to do paperwork. So we're trying to do that, that piece.
I talked with both of those ladies at the senior center. And they would be interested in stepping up to do half-time, you know, part-time.
Perfect.
So you would, you would be able to fill two part-times so that?
Yeah.
Okay, so that would be two part-time for the senior center.
And we, what we can do is we, we want to come up with a scope of work, you know.
Yes, what?
Then we can house them in our coalition in the depot. I have office space.
Yeah.
And I'll be purchasing more desks.
And we have space over there.
Yeah, and they can be, yeah, if they need to do modules, we'll have computers and stuff they can use. They have some training that they.
Have you had any talks with Janice?
I haven't. I just thought I would ask. I didn't want to.
So if you're, if you're having to do your documentation stuff, she could help you with what she has to do, what she needs to be done.
Okay. And it's not, and so how it, it looks is that it's an invoicing system. And once a month, they pay me. So I'm going to house it so that I can pay people twice a month. So we'll be floating it, basically. And it's an invoicing system where we put in data. And so we would share, it's some basic demographics, so they'd be tracking that. You know, it's who we're serving and things like that. And so we can show that we're actually doing services. It's not intensive that way. And they're asking for one or two successes a month, you know, things that, you know, where they're helping with elderly or whatever. And, and so we'll just do some basic synopsis that way. So I'll be, I'll be putting that paperwork in myself as far as the general reporting, because I'm going to gather all information from all the different employees and then put it in once a month.
And there's a training period.
Yeah, so the training would start October twelfth. There's two mandatory days that they'd have, but it's just very relaxed doing modules. And I'm going to actually take it myself so that I understand what they have to go through. So I'll just be doing that in my spare time. But I'm going to take some of that training myself. And, yeah, that, that way, if they have any issues, we're, you know, we're hiring people that we're hoping can lift them and, and make it more long-term.
So, Mr. D A, do you need a full-time person?
I would love to have a full-time person if there is a full-time position available.
Because right now, one full-time for you, one equal to, or two part-time equally, one full-time for the food bank, two part-time for the senior center equalling one. So that's still, that fills three full-time. That leaves one full-time open.
Yes. And if we don't have any need anywhere in the county, I can take it to my other counties or take it internally or whatever. But you guys can. I just figured we'll go here first and, and they have some positions, so, but I think they've filled thirty of the forty-six. So I can show you, because we're in not just rural, but frontier rural, and so our needs are a lot higher than, like, Vegas doesn't even apply for you yet. And so we're like, oh, we need them as much as, yeah. And so as much as we possibly can is, is what we're trying to.
I thought of was the hospital, that they might be looking, they might really need either one full-time or part-time or whatever. Do you want to pursue that?
And we could do, I can have a talk with them and see what their needs are. And, yeah.
But I, I think that's awesome and it provides something that we've needed in all the areas.
Yeah, they're not open yet. And this is your area, but museum could use a part-time person.
They could, but they have to actually work with, directly with the people.
And they just work with people that come in.
Yeah, it's, it's not.
Kind of service oriented.
Yeah. Yeah. And I did think about that as well, but.
And there may be some gaps where even the people that are, if they don't have enough time over at the food bank, they can volunteer and someone's for some hours and other places.
I could use help at the recycling center. Just put in that.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, because they're going to want to get their hours in, you know what I mean? And so we just want to make sure that we can keep them busy. I know Mr. Attorney Office, keep their person busy.
Well, I really appreciate it.
No, that, I, it's, it's exciting. We've never had this opportunity and I think they're recognizing that the frontier areas just don't have a lot of tax base to pay for.
Yeah.
These little things that need for service, for services. And that's where we have some gaps. Yeah.
You know, we haven't asked the sheriff's department if there's anything that they could use, some kind of liaison person.
Right.
Is that?
Thinking this maybe that person could, as part of their duties with the hospital, just to assist in dispensing medication at the jail.
And we can do specialty training. So there are some specialty scholarships that we can get for these folks and then they'll be certified. Their C H L, these are community health, it's a model that they're really going after. And so like they can specialize in nutrition, so for the food bank and stuff. And so it'll help lift these people because then they can be employable in a lot of different areas all over the state. So they're looking to have C H L as like a regular thing. So I'm, I'm really excited.
Well, and it provides income to spend within the community. I mean, that's awesome.
But I, but I think that we should really explore that with the hospital and the jail because that's something that is desperately needed over there. That wouldn't be all of their job, but it would be a part of it.
And they can go through specialty training. So there's something we know that we need to take. We can, we can do some of that.
Okay.
So would you spear him?
Sure. Yeah, I can talk to talk to the hospital C E O and I can talk to Jerry and try to coordinate that. Okay.
And then the only other question I have is, would your, where would your guardianship person be? Would they, would they actually be in a physical place or would they just be kind of?
We have physical location in our depot that they can, we have office space upstairs that they can be at if you guys don't have room here. And even, I mean, we have literal space and computers for people.
That's an option. And I appreciate that. Another option, we have an unpaid intern. We set up a little office space for him in the conference room. So maybe we could locate this person there or we. Sorry.
He's like.
I like Justin right where he is.
Well, and they wouldn't be sitting at a desk or location anyway. They should be out in the field.
Yeah. And we have some wiggle room. Like, if they're proving to do a good job, we can give them raises. So there is some wiggle room that way. I have administrative costs, basically, for every hour we turn in, I get twenty-three. So that covers admin. We have to do fingerprinting on everybody. They'll adhere to our drug-free policies and just our basic printer community coalition paperwork that we provide. And so, you know, it's just standard for us. But, yeah, we'll go from there. So.
So if you would like a motion?
Thanks.
Yes.
I will make a motion that we approve the program with the Frontier Community Coalition. And regarding the positions that are available through the Healthy Communication Coalition, one full-time for guardianship, two part-time for the food bank, two part-time for the senior center, and that we will pursue some type of jail or hospital combination for the last position. One second.
We have a motion down a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Good job.
Thank you so much, Wendy, for taking care of us.
Yeah. And then I'll be back to your board meeting.
Thank you. So, Rain, that's like AmeriCorps or it doesn't have, it won't go through payroll or anything like that?
The only thing is if they're ever going to be driving accounts.
That's what I was just going to bring up.
Make sure that they sign the leave of policy.
Right.
Or if they're going to ever become volunteer down the road, we need to do that.
Okay, because, because like, yeah, the one that was the Janice type that did AmeriCorps, she, she can drive that van to go do stuff, but she'll have to come do that. Or do that. I'm going to go get water. We have, if you guys need to set up or anything, we have a couple of minutes before we can start.
Yeah. You can come up.
That's Carol.
I'm just glad I have good communication.
We're gonna do anything to this?
Yep.
It's on. Okay, for our ten o'clock time event, we have, uh, Robert Rule from the Naval Air Station Fallon and Commander Scott Byer, Public Works Officer.
Okay.
Uh, discussion regarding full-line road.
Yeah. Chairman, appreciate you having us here today. Um, I said, uh, you've been talking about, uh, the Navy expansion and access for a long time. So I want to make sure that we're continuing that conversation. I blame myself a little bit, uh, in the past, uh, a year ago or so. I was super, uh, spent a lot of time on reaching your folks, I'm hoping, hoping that we're keeping you guys up to date, uh, as we move along. The, um, EIS, of course, concluded at the beginning of twenty-twenty, and we, the Navy signed a record decision in twenty-twenty-one. So we're, you know, eighteen months or so out from that, and still working on legislation, but, you know, as part of all of that effort, um, the Navy committed to a road study, uh, to try to, uh, figure out some of the access issues that are here, uh, locally and, 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 you know, this is not going to be the end-all, be-all, solve everything, we, we have a magic wand on, on it, but want to make sure that we're, you know, exploring options, um, especially since, um, you know, most of the access issues are, um, because of the size of the bombing ranges and how they wrap around, and that they do impact some of the roads. So, and I think that from the Department of Defense's standpoint, that, you know, kind of our number one thing is to, is to keep those, um, weapons danger zones and those, uh, bombing ranges as intact as possible, rather than they try to like, slice off pieces that which would, would reduce capability and readiness for, for the military. And, you know, that, certainly we've talked to the, the folks that do drop the bombs and, and are, are fighting our nation's wars. They, they're saying that, you know, that that's the most important part, is that we need to make sure that those bombing ranges are, are complete and that, um, as much as possible, you know, keeping those as is and, and, um, so really, like, this road study is trying to, like, do that, preserve the bombing ranges, but still provide access for, for folks to, you know, get where they need. And so, um, uh, want to just quickly state, I'm gonna pass this over to Commander Byer, Public Works Officer, uh, but I want to quickly state that all this is very preliminary, and want to make sure that we were, you know, getting at least a, a version to you guys and, and, and putting that out, uh, so you were kind of seeking your opinion, think, um, you know, and, and also you guys are, you know, pretty much the subject matter, matter experts, you know, we can have an engineer drive through the mountains, and, you know, I can walk through the mountains, and I come up with something. But you guys are the local folks, so, I mean, a little bit, have a little bit more in-depth knowledge than anything that anybody that we, we come and say, oh, well, this is what we think. So that's the other part too, was making sure that we're getting your folks' input on any of this, and, you know, is it a good idea, is it a bad idea? You know, is, is it all crap, is it all good? Um, so that, that part is, is really that. And then, uh, also, anything else you guys want to talk about, so you've talked about this expansion is, you know, we're still trying to work on legislation. Um, and so any questions, concerns, updates that you guys want, uh, but I was first handed over to Commander Byer to kind of give you that update, and then, did you guys have notes or whatever, you can ask me. Uh, Commander Scott Byer, Public Works Officer for Naval Air Station Fallon, generally responsible for, you know, anything, any other municipal public works director would be responsible for it. And so, um, for this in particular, um, roads, right, kind of, uh, fell into, into my, into my purview. So I spent a little more time on this than, than other projects because of, of the significance of it. Churchill County, um, especially, um, is kind of a red, uh, red hot item for them, um, just in terms of, of access and, uh, and a couple of the recreational opportunities, things like that, but the fact of the matter is, is a lot of full-line road is in Virgin County. So, you know, clearly, we, we wanted to, uh, to, to discuss this with, with commission and, and, uh, and, and make sure that we're communicating that, like Rob said. Also, like Rob said, over the course of, of our planning efforts for the, the modernization, we've had hundreds of issues with trying to work through the stakeholders. Uh, this is one of the few remaining, uh, ones that, uh, we, they're still trying to kind of put a, a, a lid on, um, at least find a good mitigation or solution. Um, so we contracted a, a study, um, to find potential alternative routes to the existing full-line road. So the existing full-line road is, you may be aware, basically connects, you know, Highway ninety-five, um, just south of Interstate eighty, um, and goes along the southeastern foothills of the West Elm Wall Range and connects to Coal Canyon Road, um, right, which is in Virgin County. Part of, part of that road, um, is, with our proposed expansion area, the proposed withdrawal area, um, is, is, uh, overlaps that road. Um, obviously, with the bombing range, you know, there's, you know, we can't, a lot of public access for safety purposes. Yeah. So what we had proposed to do was, was, or committed to do was a study that, that showed a couple of alternate routes. The intent for today was just to kind of introduce the, the basics in terms of what we've, what we've, uh, found so far. Um, on the twenty-third of September, at, at nine AM, uh, our contractor is going to actually present more detailed findings, the pros and cons of each alternative and whatnot. That'll be at the, the county commission chambers in, uh, in Churchill.
I would like one of, one or both of you to attend that. So September twenty-third.
At nine AM.
Nine AM.
Yes, now, in the chambers.
Yeah, I know where they are. I'm gonna look and see.
And we can, we can send a meeting invite to, I don't know, um, Commissioner, if you, if I included you on that invite the first time, did you? Okay. So, uh, yeah, that'll go through in much more detail. Proclude any of those questions today, but, um, that, that, that's the intent of that, uh, presentation, is to get into as many details as, as the audience would like, so. Um, but again, for today, um, just want to start the conversation, um, the, the, the first, uh, uh, map that, uh, that you've got there in front of you, is just kind of a, a compilation of some of the alternatives. Uh, as you can imagine, there aren't many good alternatives, right, to, to, to move in that. Um, you're either, uh, you're either going to go through the mountains, or you're going to go a long way around using Interstate eighty, which is not included in this, but is, you know, an option. All of the alternatives, um, include, include, um, some use of the existing road that services the Love Lock, um, caves. Um, all alternatives also, uh, have some degree of new footprint, um, a new route that will go through the mountains and. Um, so again, the, the first slide there is just a kind of an overall, um, compilation of some of those, some of those alternatives. The, we'll get into each one, and feel good, the, the second page, um, it, it shows in a little bit better, a little bit better detail, the, the first alternative, A. Um, again, alternative A uses, um, the, the existing, um, roadway, um, on the northern side of, of the range, some of which is better, you know, better maintained than others, it, it would all end up being maintained the same, or, or improved to the same level. Except for the, the red area, uh, that red area to the, to the north would be generally new footprint. Again, there's some existing kind of jeep trail there now, but, but through the mountains, we would need to obviously, uh, grade, um, and carve a new route out through there. The, the next slide just shows kind of a different, uh, perspective of that route, um, or at least a new footprint. Um, kind of a topographic view, and you can just see kind of from the, the non-linearity of, of the, the route, there is some, some challenging terrain. Uh, and I should have started with all of, all of the, 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 the proposed options would, would include, would be improved to a minimum of, uh, you know, compacted, graded gravel surface with drainage features where required. Drainage features could vary from anything from a small culvert to a bridge, we're not proposing any bridgeway, we'd kind of obviously follow the, the best fit route to, to minimize the cost and the, and the impact to the landscape, so. Um, so all of the, that's, that, that, that goes for all of these, these potential alternatives. Uh, the fourth page just kind of gives you a different perspective, excuse me, it's kind of a three-D version of some of the most challenging part of, of that northern alternative. Um, it's not terrible, um, this particular route.
There's a couple really switchbacks.
There is, which you see the. But, uh, but what good, you know, outdoorsman doesn't like a few good switchbacks, right? So, uh, again, I won't spend too much time on, on this in particular, uh, but, uh, you know, again, just, just a different perspective. And then the fifth, the fifth slide there, this shows on the other side, on the, the Love Lock side of the range, another, you know, kind of three-D perspective, three-D view of, um, a route that we have to, to, to take to, to maintain a less than twenty-degree grade.
Yeah.
The sixth page, uh, shows another kind of, uh, element to that alternative, uh, which is instead of using the existing route north of the Humboldt Range, um, we would use the existing full-line road up to the point at which it, you know, intersected with the, the bombing range boundary. Uh, and then we would have to carve a new route, um, from the south to the north side of the Humboldt Range, and then use the existing, which, which is near the Love Lock Cave, uh, and then use the existing service road, uh, on the north side. And then, again, use that new footprint, uh, that we just talked about on the, the northern side.
That may be page seven.
Pretty steep. The mountain.
On the.
Pretty tall and pretty steep.
On the, the southern side? Uh, yeah, that's actually better. In fact, if you go to the, the next, well, I guess, I guess, might, might be a couple, a couple slides down. But again, so, so the only difference in, in the sixth slide there, uh, is, is just that, uh, the existing route, we, we carve a new one through, from the, the south to the north side.
That last fall, so we just got it from there. It was actually pretty smooth, it was surprising that there would be a lot more challenge, but, right before the Love Lock Caves, you utilize that road, and it's pretty smooth.
Sneak it up. It's kind of a terrible road now, it's just.
That's the one that probably be.
Yeah.
Um, so on, on page seven, um, is this kind of an alternative B? Um, really, like I said, there's just not many great alternatives, so, so the, many of them kind of piggyback off some element of the, of the previous ones. The only difference in, in this alternative B is that instead of trying to go more, more northerly, where we looked at before, this is, is, is a hoax of the weapon. Another, uh, possibility to get through the mountains there, again, not a great possibility, and you'll see some of the three-D versions show that it's, it's, uh, switchbacks, and, uh, so.
It's, it's doable, I mean, I walked down, it's nice. And it's, it's, it's pretty good, it's just that probably last half mile on either side, so I think there would have to be some cutting, cutting performed. And it's, there's a couple passes there that it would be completely reasonable to have a four-wheel drive go up and through.
So, slide eight shows you just that, that, uh, portion that would have to go through the mountains. Um, and just a quick, uh, view would show that there's, you know, that there is going to be more switchbacks, more topography, more drainage challenges, uh, et cetera, et cetera. The, the slide nine shows you another three-D perspective. And, you know, again, if we want too fast, please slow me down, um, but, uh, a lot of these are just kind of visual, you know, uh, representation. Yeah, just comparatively to the, to that first alternative. Looks to be a little more, you know, reasonable. Slide ten, um, shows pretty much at the, where the, where the route would crest, uh, over the range. And again, all this is based on existing topography and keeping the grade less than twenty percent. And to do that, obviously requires multiple, multiple switchbacks. And on this slide one, it shows you on the, on the Love Lock side of the range, as you're coming down, you can kind of hug the, you know, the, the wash that comes down out of the, out of the range, um, staying, you know, obviously out of the, the middle of it, but kind of following the contours. And then, just kind of a hybrid alternative would be to, to, uh, to use the, the path that we're over, uh, from the south to the north, um, on, on the most western side, and then what we just talked about, that route through. So it's just kind of a hybrid of, of the two previous alternatives. So I won't spend too much time on the, the, the last couple, um, but I will show you. What we did talk about is, is the, the, instead of using the entire route of, um, you know, from ninety-five to the Love Lock Caves on the north side, instead of using that route to, to get through the mountains where, um, where Mr. Shields commented that, you know, it might be pretty steep. It's actually pretty reasonable with, with the, there's a three-D perspective of that view also. The last, the very last page, you can see there is a couple of switchbacks, but it's. So, you know, again, I, you know, hopefully I didn't go too fast, uh, there, there are pros and cons to all of them. Um, there's natural resources out there, there's cultural resources out there, um, there's a recreation issues, there's, um, there's, you know, land impacts, we talked about that last time, is, maybe we don't want a new road carved out in the middle of our mountains, right? Outward in low access, but they don't like too much access. Um, you know, so all those are considerations, um, but, but a lot of those details will be presented in, in that meeting on the twenty-third. Again, not precluding those questions now, but, um, you know, our, our intent is just to, to, to mitigate the impacts that, that have occurred because of our proposal. Um, and if providing new access will do that, then the Navy is more than willing, uh, to advocate for that. Clearly, we don't hold the purse strings, but we would certainly include that in our proposal, um, you know, for, for Congress to consider. If that helps us, um, mitigate or minimize the impacts to our neighboring counties and territories.
Well, one of our conversations has been.
Well, one of our conversations has been that the traffic on Poli Road currently is about two vehicles a month, maybe. And I know um we had talked about the Navy basically coordinating with the user. Um if they need to pull something across the bombing range and still use that road, but close it, then they're doing bombing exercises.
Yeah, when the range is closed, um you know, there could be opportunity, you know, like we've talked about, you know, Persian County uh would want to access for some reason, certainly that the that could be coordinated and and we would, you know, work to to make that happen. We've talked a little bit before about, um, you know, maybe some farming equipment moving from the Love Lock Valley to the Fallon Valley or vice versa. I mean, that certainly could be coordinated to like like a once or twice a year is not a big deal at all. I I think that that's that's a pretty easy piece, and we also talked a little bit about like, well, you know, vice, let's say the improvements to or, you know, I guess it could be an addition, but keep keep going. There's really that East County Road that that goes from, um, you know, would be on that east side, right on the foot of the of the of the Still Waters. Maybe that gets uh compacted all all weather surface. And now you have Love Lock Coal Canyon Road, now a gravel highway that connects to, you know, Fountain. I mean, that would be another piece there that that would probably, you know, we didn't study here, right? Because we're trying to like figure that out, but if we're talking about like access to that east side of the valley, there's more opportunities than that certainly we're going to go here, but we've really looked at just trying to figure out like to to, you know, mitigate that impact that full length road. I think Commander Byer has done previous work where you kind of map western and and it's almost faster to go all the way to Love Lock Coal Canyon Road to get to that, to get to that than to go to Poli Road, because it's, you know, somewhere between forty and twenty-five, twenty and ten miles an hour some of those areas, so it's just a, it's just a different, different way of looking at things. So again, we're not going to preclude that particularly.
You're referring to this road?
Yes, right.
When it gets straight down the mountain range.
Yeah, so certainly you would take that.
Yeah, the hardest part is there's no good, you know, one size fits all answer, it it depends on what the concern is, and that's maybe partly what we want to hear from you. From Churchill County, you know, one one of the concerns is that was emergency access, but I I, you know, we had presented to them, so look, if you're talking about getting to, you know, uh the same terminus on coal line, you know, Coal Canyon Road, it is faster to go all the way at ninety-five, Interstate eighty at seventy-five, eighty miles an hour, and then back down a paved road to Coal Canyon. Now, Coal Canyon is in Virgin County, so they, you know, their emergency access may fall short of that, but if you're talking about economic development, well, you know, that's different for for Virgin County and Churchill County, right? Because presumably, any kind of mine development or anything else um in in Virgin County would just use the nicely paved Coal Canyon Road to get to the market uh or to transport at least. Um and and so the 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 solutions, I guess, are somewhat different, the mitigations are somewhat different for the various concerns. Um what the the just the the two routes that kind of that we presented, um they may not solve Persian County's concerns at all. Unless it's purely just recreation or or what and whatnot, so, but because part of it is in Virgin County, we clearly needed to go present.
Thoughts on this all along have been, we do have that our our producers out in Dixie Valley, whatever valley that is, that that will use this road, the whole line road. And the one or two vehicle a month, he pulls his his equipment across there. The rest of it is um if the Navy, the Navy doesn't usually bomb on weekends. Correct?
We don't fight wars on weekends.
So, you know, it would be available on weekends, it would still be open pretty much on weekends for recreational. And everybody else that happens to go out and cut around the hills. And I don't see an issue with just whoever needs to use that contacting the Navy and coordinating going across there.
Yeah, so there are some constraints, right?
Yes.
It, I want to be clear that it's not just, even though we're not bombing, it's not just open, right? We do have to fence the entirety of the range for safety reasons. But there is the possibility of of, you know, clearing uh that route for that purpose with some advance notice, and it 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 is difficult for, because the route has to be cleared uh of ordinance and and whatnot, for safety reasons, that there there would be required uh some some advanced notification required. I don't know exactly what that is, but and presumably.
It's not impossible.
Yeah.
Figured it out.
Sure, we figured it out, yeah. You know, uh uh again, we, you know, we would have to kind of coordinate that with the operators and make sure that we're we're uh we're all square with with them, the range operators. Uh but it it is something that we've discussed internally, you know, Navy internally before, um that's uh that could be a possibility.
And my thing is, is every time I've been out in this area, I have never actually been on that bombing range. And I spend a lot of my. I haven't been on the bombing range, and I spend a lot of time with my husband out there, so. You know, we have gone across here where the cheap trails are, and he's had me on the floor a few times. And we have been all the way down to the highway that comes out near, the road that comes out near Fallon. I have never been on the bombing range, so, and I've lived here thirty-three years, so. Is it real big issue if the Navy can sell a lot of access for coordinated access for the people that need to move equipment across there?
At at the meetings you did, have you had comments, uh I don't want to say complaints, but comments about, actually in two ways, one is there are property owners that own property up on what would be the west side of the Still Waters. And then you also have the mining contingent, and that was a lot of mining people that were the saint of mom and pops of one, not the big guys, and they had concern about getting to their land, both of them.
So, I mean, and that, I mean, that that absolutely is a is a valid concern. Uh I don't know if necessarily they could be twenty part, you know, would be, I don't know if that really affects any mining claims. Um because most of it's down in that valley, so not a lot of mining resource there, there may be some um up in the foothills. And, you know, but in terms of like a larger aspect that, you know, we also would throw in B seventeen down there, that's, you know, nigh um southern Churchill area, that certainly has a lot more mining interest there. And, you know, we we talked about, like, maybe allowing some sort of access, you know, early on. And but it it it, you know, like the coordinator says, like, hey, we need some, you know, some lumber delivered to Annapolis Valley, because we're going to build a corral. And obviously, this road is the best road, you know, whatever, used to pull in road. I think that kind of coordinated access is absolutely possible. Take a couple weeks notification, make sure that, you know, because the Navy is going to use some of this road as well, so maybe, but like Commander Byer had said, it's going to have to be make sure there's no bombs on the road drive-through, but that kind of coordinated access, but that kind of piece where um you would have, like, somebody go out and mine, you know, like on the weekends or something, is is just a little bit outside of that, because you're not like traveling on a small road. It'd be out in the mountain digging, like, like, you can't a hundred percent guarantee that there's going to be that kind of safety. So we talked through a lot of that, and 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 really the mitigation there would be the the purchase of of that mine, I mean. And, you know, that that, you know, in and above itself is, you know, like, oh darn, you know, I you know, my family's from Virginia City, we still have kind of patented mining claims up in the mountains there, if I've lost that, I don't have that kind of craft for these things. But, you know, in terms of the other side is that the compensation would would be some sort of payment, and, you know, if it's a patented mining claim, if something has a valid validity exam against it, um certainly that that's really much considered real property, and and, you know, there would be some sort of like, like, hey, this is your stuff, this is your land, uh this is your, you know, your resource, and, you know, and that's all, you know, we really don't, that's really not going to impact too many mines that really pro- progress to like a like a full mining operation, like you're ready to go. We had that case in Bell Mountain, which is down there uh just off of Fairview Peak. Um but we've, I've I've just personally spent hundreds of hours with the ownership and the management to like try to get around and and so they can mine their resources. You know, so we're not, you know, I said, it it's things, right? You know, like, hey, somebody's stuff would would, uh, you know, have to be paid for, but, you know, the the Navy is also not going to say, well, you know, screw you. We're not going to compensate you for that stuff, and that would be go for water rights, you know, personal property, like, you own the land, right, over the surface. Um I think that 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 that, you know, you would simply work with the government, um, in most of the cases, that's going to be like an appraisal, you know, we'd have higher, had a higher price on the rights, good at, you know, grazing and stuff, and and that they would determine the value of market, like a blink of market value off of that and that payment would be made off of that, so, and I I know that's a concern, and, you know, so I feel that pretty heartfelt, but you know, that, you know, that kind of is, as you move through the world and you're for a lot of bombing range, um, you know, the access would be cut off. We we tried early on, like, can we do grazing, can we do mining, it's just really, really hard.
Okay, thank you.
We've we've had the discussions and and they're, they have uh helped me through this and and they're working really hard, really hard to try and get through this, especially with some of the.
You have a comment?
People we have to work with.
I spoke about this before, but moving huge farm equipment from Fallon to Love Lock, that's a little difficult to schedule, uh, you know, and I'm concerned that dealing with the government that sometimes takes quite a bit of time, and those schedules vary with the temperature that affect when the crop is ripe, and when the crop is ready to be harvested, it's got to be done at a time, you know, so I'd like to put that out, it's it's.
It doesn't just happen on weekends, right?
Yes, yeah, um, and then also, uh we've had a producer build corrals out uh towards the Love Lock Cave, and so the traffic has increased. And even though the road department went out and worked on that road, uh within a few days, it was pretty difficult to travel, so that road uh would require a lot of um improvement.
It is a maintenance as well, I mean, talk about that, so I talked to Mr. Over a lot in the past, we've communicated, it was talked about, like, moving equipment and things like that. The other part would be to try to figure out what what kind of maintenance we would, you know, put on that, and then certainly that I would communicate that, like a branch road to the mountains would have to have some sort of maintenance. Or I just said, like, it's, you know, even in the, even on that Love Lock side, the roads are going to get washed for and run into other things, so you know, if you have to hit it with a greater once a year, maybe a little gravel, but, yeah, that's the other part as well, I think that's, and I know you guys live that on, you know, on a daily basis, so.
And and as far as that is concerned, I, you know, just to be, just to be transparent and clear is that the the Navy's ability to to sustain a a a road like this in perpetuity is A, I can't commit to that now, um and B, I don't know if anybody else, you know, even higher than the Navy would commit to that, I think we would certainly, we maintain part of the road now that that we use to access the long range, and it's better than any other proper road. So, you know, there's there's that element that that uh we could probably commit to to doing whatever the Navy, maintaining whatever the Navy uses. Anything beyond that, I I would, I just want to be transparent that I that we can't commit to that now. Um sure, whether or not we could add some kind of, you know, uh mutual agreement or or some kind of thing in the future, that that that's certainly a possibility, but I just wanted to.
For the other part, Paul, like the, like traveling from, you know, Love Lock to to uh to Fallon, I mean, would East County Road work at all? I mean, if it was approved, you know, I know it's good shape, but it's, there is some places that are not probably conducive to driving equipment.
Well, currently, it's over Wild Horse Pass, which you didn't mention, which is the main route. Uh probably gets more traffic uh from Love Lock, White Horse Pass to Fountain than North of the Coal Canyon Road.
I just came across that road last week.
Gotcha. It it isn't used much, but the one going south is sort of.
Gotcha, 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 I understand now, okay.
Yeah, I, you know, and and again, hard to commit now, understand that, you know, you you may not be able to get three weeks notice or whatever. I think, I think in the area that we're talking about, it's it's in the, it's generally the furthest extent of of the proposed bombing area. Ninety-nine point nine percent of our bombs fall on the intended target, which is not in that area, so so any clearance event that would have to happen presumably would be pretty quick, they go out there and and do a surface scan and say that there's no bombs and open the road up. So clearing that area would be much, much quicker than, you know, other more high impact areas. Um but your point is out in terms of working with the government and us not being uh yeah, fast about anything.
Yeah.
That that is all true, so uh we we would certainly need, if it if it comes to that, we would certainly need to kind of work on a a finite process that that we can uh we can execute um with with the life of of farmers in mind.
Okay, thank you again.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
The the iron mine and the access to the railroad, what, how's that going or?
You've probably heard as much as I have, I've, we've, we've had some conversation with the the iron mine ownership twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, but they have not reached back to us at all, and and you know, we've tried to, you know, think through that as well, you know, the kind of the, and and really, from the mining company, we'd like to see, it's it's kind of like a return on investment. Like you would build a brand new road across the middle of the salt flat uh for forty-six miles, or utilize Coal Canyon Road that's twenty-four miles to come to Love Lock, so. I mean, it it would be, you know, at least from from the standpoint of the company, like, hey, like, it's like, like utilizing this twenty-four miles of already paved road is less economically viable than, you know, making a brand new either road, road, you know, like a haul road or a railroad across the 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 valley, so certainly, any kind of input from from the mining company would, you know, we would, we would welcome, right? We're willing to sit, talk with anybody and try to address those concerns and come up with a solution, that's because we're trying to get to the solution. Uh but, you know, the the other part too is that they, you know, the the mining company at that time did own, you know, property at ninety-five where they could, you know, offload the iron ore and load it on the Pacific Trail, but they also have, uh at that time, certainly, a year ago, they, uh, the mining company also had that same uh property in Love Lock. So twenty, thirty acres that were right adjacent to the Pacific here, so.
Right at the intersection of Coal Canyon and Deney.
Yeah, there was a consultant that contacted me, gosh, maybe at least a year ago, but then he's no longer with them, and I.
You provided me that contract.
Yeah, and and I haven't heard from anybody since, and so I don't know what's going on.
Of course, like you guys shared it, you can certainly send them our way, again, we're not, if, you know, like, in terms of like the economic development, we're going to try to pursue solutions, right? We're not going to try that to 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 make things like where you can't have economic, economic resources, that does not make any sense, right? Like, hey, this is only the Navy not mining, this is only Navy not grazing, like, try to come up with as common solutions as possible, can't stuff on, tougher on the bottom range because of the, because of the danger for safety, but but certainly in terms of of the the iron mine, more than willing to sit down and talk with them and come up with a solution. And, you know, we've, we've talked to, you know, uh, you know, smallest about it is, you know, I I I know one of the owners of one of the mines down there, and, you know, he's not happy, but, you know, is, you know, like, like, hey, come on, come, come to us and like, let's work on two or three uh courses of action, and if we can come up with one that's suitable for everybody, that would be fantastic. But if it employs sixty people or fifty people or whatever in Love Lock, that's good.
And if there's a portion of, let's say, the Poli Road reconfiguring that actually is in our county that maybe we end up maintaining to some degree, would the Navy entertain, um possibly, and I'm just throwing this out, you know, like, purchasing the equipment for us, and maybe the the a building or something where it can be housed if it's close by, I don't know, because I've not been out that way like you have. So I'm going to have to take a trip because I haven't been out that direction.
Get up there, right?
Yeah, and uh get lost, probably. Um anyway, I just wanted to throw that out, I don't expect an answer, but it's something to think about.
Well, I can say that we will consider all alternatives and if that's something that, you know, that, that is desirable, we'll, we'll look at it and see if we can put it into the plan somehow and, and.
Yeah, so if we had talked about like the East County Road or the Cool Canyon Road, if, if there would need to be some sort of improvement and that helps solve the access issue. Be looking at the viability of all that. And as Commander Byron said, if it was like some sort of Navy use. I mean, I, I think that that's certainly within, you know, because they would have an intergovernmental, intergovernmental contract to kind of compensate for like, hey, you know, you're, you're grading fifteen miles of road for the Navy, so we're going to pay you twenty thousand dollars a year. I think, I think that's all possible. If we could check the box in any way that the Navy is going to use that in kind of regularity, that, that, that's a pretty easy to do.
Okay, good. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
It's nice meeting you.
Okay, see you next time.
Carol, we get the next meeting. I'll be in Florida.
Dana, there might be more details than you want.
I think I better go for a drive before I go. I have no idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Dana. How are you?
I'm good. Am I okay to the bathroom?
Okay, we're, we're fine. We are good.
You have some information for us?
I have information and a request.
Yes.
So for those of you who don't know me, I'm Dana Chabasiani. My company, G Two Archaeology, has been contracted by Quon Mining to do cultural mitigation for the mine expansion project that they're doing. And we've been working the last couple of years with the Marston House Museum Board. Part of my duty is to create a virtual tour that's going to be displayed at the Marston House in the Rochester, Rochester exhibit space. So at this point, I have a subcontractor who is, the, the tour is drafted. We're still in the, we're wrapping up the excavations actually out in Packer Flat right now, or a crew out there right now. So we're still taking pictures that are going to be added into the virtual tour. So the tour is not totally done, but it should be completed in November. And at this stage, we're trying to figure out how we're going to house the actual virtual tour. And I am not an IT person and I won't pretend, but my understanding is that basically the tour is going to be totally complete and it just needs to be embedded into a website. So what I am here to inquire about is whether or not the county would consider putting the link to the virtual tour on the Marston House page that's on the county website. And I didn't.
Justin's our IT person.
So is, is it just a link somewhere else? Are you looking for someone to actually store the content?
House the content. So I have like, so basically she said that the HTML code would be embedded into like transferred by via FTP, would be embedded onto your server?
So there, there shouldn't, there's, what, do you know what one of the tour takes? Is it a slideshow, self-interest? Is it a video? Is it, is it a website that you click through and navigate?
It's interactive. It's, so basically it's going to essentially be a, a walking tour, a virtual walking tour through all of Rochester Canyon and Packer.
Okay. Uh, there. If, if I can get in touch with where your technical person is, give more details. Yeah, I don't, I don't see, I, I, I don't, I don't see a problem with the work moving it.
Okay.
It's, it's really just going to be working out the details.
Okay.
What needs, what needs to be placed where.
Okay.
But yeah, it shouldn't, it shouldn't.
Okay, and we just also thought it'd be a really good exposure for the museum also. Since I know the museum board's trying, you know, working really hard to attract visitors, it would be a good a good way to get it out to the more public and maybe actually draw people to the museum. Okay, that would be fantastic. Yeah, because I don't even want to try. I can tell you that the platform is three D disset and that's all.
Whatever that means.
I know. It's like, I've seen the draft version of it and it looks great and I think it's going to be really wonderful, but yeah, other than that, I'm not quite sure.
Well, I think it's great. I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve doing this, but working with Justin so that it's something that doesn't cause any issues or problems.
Okay, fantastic.
Good job.
I don't leave it. I have a question for you.
Okay, I was going to get, actually I wasn't going to leave, I was going to give Justin my, my card so that I didn't have to.
So we have a motion and a second. All those, the paper, the motion?
Aye.
All right, motion passed.
So my question, Dana, is the blacksmith shop was moved to the museum site.
Yes.
Inside was some items, artifacts.
Yes.
And my, what we found out yesterday was those artifacts were picked up by Core and taken back because of the, was an issue with the agreement with BLM.
Yes.
And so as far as we know, they're sitting on the ground somewhere over there and they're not going to last very long. Are you working on getting that resolved?
So the backstory to that is that, so the, the MOU was, unfortunately, it only said blacksmith shop and did not say and associated artifacts. So I've been in touch with the Nevada State Museum because all of the artifacts that we're excavating are coming to my lab, being processed and then getting curated at the Carson facility at the state museum. And with the intention that then after they're curated, then should the Marston House Museum want to loan out some of the artifacts, then they can loan them out at no cost, but you just have to go through all the paperwork. The, the museum folks said that we would have to curate the table. So we, we had brought, part of the reason why the forge table was moved was because the structure members actually had to pull out the forge table in order to move the blacksmith shop. So at that time I had just said, go ahead, put it on the flatbed because I know the folks at the museum would like it. Didn't think it would turn into this whole thing. So I, anyways, long story short, Nevada State Museum curator suggested reaching out to the BLM to see if we could just amend the MOU. And just to add a little, not even a whole sentence, but just say and associated artifacts. The BLM didn't even want to consider it. So in order, so that basically that's why we had to bring the artifacts back out. I could keep, keep working on the BLM about that. I don't know why it was not even, I don't know why they didn't want to discuss it. I know that they're short staffed. But if, if the, if the museum would really like to have those artifacts, then yes, you are correct. They're just back out at the site, sitting there. So that, that's basically the backstory to it. So I had, since the artifacts were moved and it wasn't Core that moved them, it was actually.
Oh, well, I knew somebody.
Yeah, yeah. So I had a couple of my archaeologists come up and move it, because I know that the, I know that like Frank wanted to start renovating stuff, so I didn't want him to put all this effort into trying to fix the tables. It was falling apart and stuff.
So once they are, whatever you're doing with them, I forgot the term, curating. Curated, then those, any of those artifacts could come back to the Marston Museum?
They could. And the, we could have, the, the main concern of both Nevada State Museum and the BLM was that if for some reason twenty, thirty years from now, the Marston House Museum closes, all the artifacts are out on loan or going to have to go back to the curation, sorry, curation facility in Carson City. And the, the BLM's concern was that those artifacts, the table, there was a half cut, like fifty gallon barrel, and then the anvil stone were not worthy of being housed at the Nevada State Museum in the curation facility should they end up back down there. So that was the, that was the concern. But if, if there, if, if, personally, I tried to explain that the, the reason why the blacksmith shop was eligible for the national register in the first place was because of all of the associated artifacts. Somebody walked up to it and it was a blacksmith shop with the anvil stone on the ground and the forge table. So I know that the museum folks was, that was their intention, the most create that aesthetic, basically. So that if, if, it's definitely something that we can continue to.
Do we need to contact BLM Director, State Director?
Um, I think at this point, maybe we could, I could just like start a conversation again with the BLM folks and with the field manager and just say this is something, if, if you guys really do want tackles.
They really do want them. They, it's part of the whole atmosphere of the blacksmith shop.
Totally understand.
And, well, yeah, and I'm not completely, I'm not blaming you or anybody else. But what we need to do is, and then we need to protect them. For right now, I'm not sure exactly where they are, but I mean, anybody could go and pick them up and they're gone.
Yes. Oh, for sure. Yeah.
So how are we going to do that?
That I can't, there's, I can't, there's no way to protect them. I mean, they're just sitting out and they open right now. They're back out at the, at the site. The site thankfully isn't very visible. I mean, it's kind of down in a little ravine. So it's not, it's not.
Yeah, but we have people that wander all over and pick up things.
Yeah, and there were artifacts that were taken from that blacksmith shop from the first time that I saw it, like eight years ago. There was a big galvanized bucket that was hanging on the, inside, yeah, and that's gone. So I'd be happy to, to reopen the conversation with BLM.
We need to.
Okay, and I, I, I'm not going to, just like, I'm not going to pretend to be an IT person. I'm not going to pretend to be a NEPA expert, but I don't understand.
And, and we aren't either and we don't understand sometimes. So, but if you could do everything on your part and if we need to do something on ours and if we need to have somebody go and pick them up and pretend that whatever, I mean, what do we do?
Yeah.
Because they will be gone.
They will be. Yeah, yeah, for sure. And the table is already like, I mean, I'm sure.
Everything's, yeah.
It's already kind of in a state of disrepair, but I don't know how, how difficult it is to amend an, an MOU.
Yeah.
So, but I will reopen.
But that's, that's the concern.
Not difficult.
Not difficult. Well, that's why I'm like, it's just like four words.
Well, so.
To BLM? Do they have the power to amend one?
Well, I don't know. That's what I'm wondering.
I don't know who wrote it. Unfortunately, the archaeologist that I was working with was Tanner Wetstone and he.
Did he work out of Winnebago?
He did, and Tanner's not there anymore.
Okay, so what about Esther, the director of the Winnebago District?
So I think Kathleen's the.
No, well, Kathleen is reports to Esther.
Okay.
I think her call to Esther is in order from, from the county.
I can, I can call her. And I can give you, well, if I could get your phone number too, so, because I'm not an expert either, so. And then.
Yeah, and if, if we can, if we can sort it out with the that they can amend the MOU, that would be fantastic and we can get the, we can get them back to the museum.
I'm sure. Okay, great.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. I will call her.
Okay.
As soon as I finish this meeting. Okay, thanks. And I'll let you know what she says.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, we are down to matters of the board for discussion. Sheila?
Um, well, you heard of what I've been doing. Um, there was a Humboldt River Water Meeting. We're moving forward. Are we going to move forward with the cloud seeding? Did we get enough funds?
Yeah. The authority approved spending five thousand. There was a little proposal initially in fifteen, two, two board members kind of objected to that amount. So we brought it down to five. Some of the other issues was the, the other item on there is the tobacco transpiration from satellites. There's a little controversy there, especially in my heart. I know that producers in Florida that have been prevented from putting fertilizer on their fields because of satellite entry. So water inventory in Nevada would be a concern. The mining representatives suggest bringing Justin Honeycutt, Honeyton back and bringing that issue back. So it'll be brought back to the next meeting and some additional discussion.
Yeah. And then we did, Persian County and Churchill County did file that protest against whatever company that was. Um, you guys know about the community center? It's just a one headache after another. I think that's all I have.
Um, we had a hospital board meeting and we're working well. One of the federal mandate, if there's a federal mandate or a state mandate that hospital employees have to be vaccinated for the COVID or not be employed. If that should happen at our hospital, we only have about fifty percent that are immunized and most of the remaining ones don't want to be. And so it's not just going to hurt our hospital. It's going to hurt every hospital and it's totally ridiculous. And then we had a Purge Healthcare Foundation meeting last night. And from the Bass Dinner, we cleared just over nine thousand dollars. We had a lot of donations. So everything went really well. We're going to work harder on getting the word out so that it becomes an even better event. But those funds go to scholarships for individuals who want to pursue medical careers and stay within Persian County. I want to wish Rena a happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
And I think that's about it.
Jerry?
Sir.
Come on up. We already, there was two action items on the agenda.
Meeting at the school district and then I just got, I have an FBI, somebody from the FBI doing a lot in my office. I've been busy before.
And we approved both of the actions.
Thank you.
Anything else to report?
Yeah, we have, well, I guess we do have something. We have some interviews coming up Friday for admin staff and dispatching. So hopefully we'll get some progress made on that.
Good.
We will be doing testing for two potential deputies on Friday as well.
And the Frontier Community Coalition did a presentation on some available positions that worked directly with people and help out in the community and the DA is going to discuss that with you to see if maybe can help in the jail somehow. And I don't mean as the jailer, but.
We're dispensing medications and providing medical assistance. Want to coordinate with the hospital. I don't know if you had a chance to speak with Cindy?
No.
Okay, so maybe you and I ought to approach her. I can fill you in on the details later.
It's a great opportunity. If you can utilize them.
Okay.
So you're sounding a little, a little better than you were just a couple of days ago.
Yeah, I'm not freezing, so. Me, me with the goosebumps in ninety-eight degrees.
Yes, I know. Very unusual for you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Okay, thank you. We'll go on to public input, public comment and discussion, or actually maybe take another matter raised on this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item. as an item of funding, which actually was the case. The post commentary will generally be limited to three minutes per person. Any public comments? Yes, sir.
The commission has discussed several times about the test issue in Grass Valley. I spoke with people. I'm wondering if you want me to, not that I'm looking for more work, but a presentation on that at a future meeting. I could put together some maps that shows the location and then give feedback on some of the discussions I've had with people out there.
Is it affecting more than the neighbor?
Well, at the last planning commission meeting, Tori Emerson brought up the issue and was speaking with a lot of misinformation. Concerned about the water use, concerned about the lights being off. And their operation is, is first class. And, and I wanted to talk to Bryce about right to farm. I know there's a right to farm in the egg preservation area. I don't know the extent beyond that.
Yeah, it's a state law.
Okay.
Yeah, I can get you that law. We'll talk about it.
So I, I, I think the operation needs protection from the community versus the other way around.
Would it be better to do some kind of presentation at the Grass Valley meeting?
I can do that, yes.
I think maybe that would answer that question.
Okay.
Carl, thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Any public comments on Zoom? You have a public comment?
The, for the museum, we found that the old key house that was purchased, there may be devolution. We owe us a little bit. We have a crew on Friday. Maybe my dad's horse. We're going to go disassemble it. And the museum board, we're going to make some financial motions at the next one. But we want to utilize it over there at the museum. It's beautiful. We estimated to be around $10,000 to build it. So it's a little bit quality. So anyhow, we're going to have a crew disassembling it on Friday.
It's, it sounds like it could be a good venue for weddings.
Yeah, it'd be really nice. They audition over there.
Yeah.
It's like his birthday. So there. Friday at nine. Can I just make a comment in regards to that in as far as volunteers going up there? If they have, I'll take the county volunteer program. It will not be covered under the county's work. It's comp. And it's very, very important that we realize that because we're getting a lot of people volunteering in the county program if something happens. If there are museum board members on the museum property, you call two taxi drivers specifically. But anyone who does not on the board or not in the volunteer program will not be covered.
Okay. No public, public comment on Zoom? Seeing none, we're going to go into approval of that.
I will make a motion to approve vouchers. And I will second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of vouchers. Paul is in favor.
Aye.
Motion passed. Meeting adjourned.